Mr. A pledge. Director, would you lead us in prayer, please? Father God in heaven, we come to you tonight in the name of your son. We thank you for everything that you're doing in the city of Montevista. We thank you for everything you're doing in the San Luis Valley. God will be asked for your guidance, for your protection, for your wisdom, for your heaven. In my name of your son, issue. Well, then I would do roll call, please.
Councilor Howard.
Here.
Councilor Locke. Here. Councilor Lynn.
There.
Mayor Proton Sabola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Four minutes cleared.
Do you have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We got three. I will add the following five reports to the agenda item N. Um, we have staff reports of red connection. Planning city manager and city attorney. And then we will be adding a state senator Simpson to agenda item F three. And then we'll be adding the audio extension to the agenda item now two.
Yeah.
What is the heading? What is the audio extension?
Audio extension. Audio extension to where?
Also.
Make a motion to include the modifications to the agenda seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda. And I'm gonna need you know when. Is there any discussion? Well, Dana.
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
I.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Sabola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Would she carry to approve to have the modifications to the agenda?
Rule of consent agenda minutes of regular meeting from June first twenty twenty-three and approval of counts payable. Make motion to improve the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda from the minutes of regular meeting from June first twenty twenty-three and approval of accounts payable. So any more discussion? Well, Dana.
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
I.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Sabola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Would she carry to approve it? To approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from June first twenty twenty-three and the review of approval of the count payable.
We'll do confirmations, communications, and appointments. We have the swearing in of officers. So this would be Mr. Chief Dean Felder.
Thanks, Mayor. Probably getting up the full staff. So we've got first three out of five that were going to swear in tonight. Um, the other two, soon as we get them here, I think they start on on June twenty-sixth. So we're gonna be at full staff. So as you know, that's been a struggle. I know. I know. So I'm gonna have the three officers from up. Juan Paul Maris, Jessica Mormon, and Leo Rhodas. All right, stand here and face me. All right, raise your right hand. I.
I.
Juan Paul Maris.
Jessica Mormon.
You saw me swear.
You saw me swear.
I was for Constitution United States.
I was on the Constitution of the United States.
State of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
The charter of the city of Montevista.
Right.
You can pass this stuff. And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
A police officer.
A police officer.
Which I have been appointed to.
To.
That. So, uh, yeah. Congratulations. And leave just as some of these ones.
Good. That's it. Everybody else has already been stuck and.
Well. The other one.
Congratulations, guys. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for being with us.
I tell story, a little story about Juan there. I started, I started here in the Bay of San Francisco. Juan was a cop here in Montevista. And then he was smart and left for about twenty-seven years. But then he was lost his mind and came back.
Well, welcome back.
It's good to have Juan back. Juan's a great kid. He's been in this company a long time. Uh, medical and this and that. So it's good to have Juan back. And awkward. What does that mean? They having that.
Yeah. Very good. Believe you have the next one as well?
Yes, sir. I'm just gonna seek one. So. I think you're seeing a little bit on this. Uh, I nominated Detective Cisneros for an award that was presented by the US Attorney General. And so it was, it was kind of a long process. I nominated him last October or something like that. And it's a long drawn out process to get to this. But either way, I nominated him because I thought he he met the criteria of the reward. And moment we hold out of two hundred applicants nationwide, uh, Zink was one of nineteen that was selected. And um, me and him got to go back to DC and and uh, the US Attorney General America actually presented him the award. So it was a pretty cool ceremony to be a part of, especially something like this, small town like this. I mean, we were by far a small agency there. There were agencies with, you know, fifteen, two thousand officers and stuff and stuff they've done. But the fact that he was recognized for the work that he's done with with federal agencies and drug interdiction and stuff like that. Uh, it is pretty. But I'm just gonna read this letter that I actually, that I got from the Attorney General. Uh, says, your chief Ling Bode. Please accept my congratulations that a member of your department, Detective Ezekiel Cisneros, has been selected to receive the Attorney General's Award of Distinguished Service in Community Policing. Honoring and supporting the work of our nation's dedicated law enforcement officers is top priority for President Biden and the Department of Justice. I welcome this opportunity. I express my gratitude and respect for the officers such as Detective Cisneros who work every day to protect the civil rights communities. The Attorney General's Award for Distinguished Service in Community Policing, now his sixth year, recognizes the individuals, state, local, tribal, sworn rank and file police officers, deputies and troopers for outstanding effort in innovative community policing strategies, criminal investigations, and field operations that have proven effective. This noble work far too often goes unacknowledged, but through this award, we seek to highlight the importance of community policing and the vital public service that our nation's law enforcement personnel provide. Officers such as Detective Cisneros are an inspiration to me, our colleagues in law enforcement, and communities we serve. Thank you for leadership in this city's achievement, supported work that results in honors such as this. Congratulations again. I note still. Congratulations, Zeke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Detective.
Do you want to say something?
Where's your medal? I want to see the certificate.
I'll bring it, but I left it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That shows great teamwork and great leadership. Okay, our next one will be State Senate Senator Mr. Simpson. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity. Just kind of worked out. Uh, Gigi and I were conversing for six months or more trying to figure out a time for me to come just introduce myself and uh, engage with the council. So I had to be prepared for another meeting and it just worked out where I, you know, they only got more than forty-five minutes of your time.
It was a short meeting.
Oh, really? It wasn't just an opportunity. I I've met most of you individually over, over time and um, opportunity again to engage with the other council and um, show my appreciation uh, for what you do for the community and know that, you know, I am there. I I work for, you know, you all and the residents here of Montevista at the Capitol for a hundred and twenty days, January through May. Um, if you didn't know me, I just a little bit. I was born and now I'm also raised in almost some of the valleys. Valley's home. I'm routinely talk about I'm a fourth generation of my family to farm and ranch in the San Luis Valley. So um, graduated high school now, also and then went to the school mine and got an engineering degree and left for a while. But this is all my wife's from almost we went to high school together. So you can tell the writing was on the wall. We were ready to come back here. And obviously, politics wasn't like on my things to do list. It wasn't like my passion. Um, farming and ranching is personally foremost, but um, most of you know, I also manage the Rio Grande Water Conservation District. And I'm also so water and ag were really driving forces for my interest in in serving the community and really enough is being about rural Colorado, whether it's veterans issues or higher education or K through twelve. I'm gonna have this affinity to ag and water. So I spend a lot of time in those spaces. So um, it's been an honor and a privilege. I've just finished the third year of my four-year term and uniquely I was elected in twenty twenty percent of District Thirty-five. So very proud it was my predecessor. That Senate district was all of the San Luis Valley counties and then everything east to Kansas. So there were ten more counties to the Kansas line. And then because of the census and redistricting in twenty twenty, a commission, you know, re-drew the boundaries and affected in January of this year. I all of a sudden become the Senator for Senate District Six, which is the San Luis Valley and eight counties going west to Utah. I'll spend, uh, you know, the better part of this year and this summer trying to engage with folks all the way to Cortez and Telluride Naterita, New Bull, Uray, up to Ridgeway. So it's gonna be a challenge this summer trying to get out and uh, manage my farm and show up at the water district and try to engage with folks in city council and Grango, Cortez, Dove Creek and so. But again, what drives me is that passion about rural Colorado. And that's what Gigi and I are talking about today, about opportunities to help the city of Montevista and some of the projects you all. So again, I want to take up time to stay, just to kind of formally introduce myself in in the setting and know I'm really available about either individually or reach out through Gigi and again, how I can help you and the community in Montevista and so. Um, thank you for the opportunity. And after questions, if you want to ask any questions or my meeting appears until seven, so I'm gonna sit and listen and stick around for a while as well. Thank you for changing your agenda and allowing me to just spend a few moments with you. I'll keep the topic short for forty-five minutes.
I I do have a question.
Yes.
Mayor, if council doesn't have a question. So Sandra Simpson, you know, we've been working with um, San Luis Valley DRG and the Council of Governments on creating a ten forty-one, ten forty-one agreement in order to try to stop future water projects of exportation outside of the San Luis Valley. And council, we haven't told council a lot about it. That's coming on your July sixth meeting. There has been some information in the newspaper. But do you see this as a smart strategic move to fight off groups like RWR?
It's it's a rather unique approach that I I can't can't find an instance where this has been accomplished with multiple entities where you're almost um, I don't know, the attorneys in the room, so you can correct me, but you're almost subjugating yourself to somebody else's uh, lack particularly land use codes and ten forty-one. So I I'm like, I haven't been actively engaged in that conversation for the year that it's been going on. But from the outside looking in going, I, there's value in what's trying to be in the pop, trying to be accomplished. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable that it's constructed well enough to protect Rio Grande Water Conservation District and some of the projects we're trying to do and maybe even because those are about municipal water projects in general. Like trying to make sure and I just encourage you to work with people with Mr. Ferrish and in the language in there and trying to get protections for what you all are trying to accomplish as well. Again, what the intention is very honorable. I don't know. And again, because it's so unique, um, I I don't know of another instance of a of a similar agreement of this. So we just need to be thoughtful about how how we approach it. So I have some concerns, but again, appreciate what the effort is trying to do. Anybody that's lived here long enough knows we we have these water export, serious water export conversations about every decade. The very first one was in nineteen seventy-two and that's uh, San Marcos Pipeline Project. We were gonna drill wells in Postia County, pipe it over to be the pass and use it to swallow the Texas. And it was AW that AWVI, then Stockwinds and then Sustainable Water, now Renewable Water. So every one of those, the community has come together to really afford, find another significant hurdle for those proponents of those projects to get over. And I think it's been helpful every time. And this might be the next example of the next release. They'll never go away. The value of water just continues to escalate, you know, to unbelievable levels. You all appreciate in in Rio Grande County and the stuff we're working on in sub-districts and the value of water or pumping groundwater, you know, originally it was at forty-five dollars, then it was at seventy-five, then it was at ninety, then it was at one fifty. The Board of Directors of the District yesterday approved a plan that goes to the state that will raise that fee to five hundred dollars maker foot. That's monumental. But you compare that, I I know on the Front Range, Colorado Big Thompson Project Water, which municipalities can secure those share fairly easily are in the eighty to ninety thousand dollar to make a foot. So that's the kind of pressure. You know, the value of water just continues to grow exponentially. So the pressures are gonna continue to grow. So we should be very thoughtful and mindful about how we work collaboratively here in this community to again create, just the mostly protect our water resources to the best, to the to the highest extent that we can. And I think this is an attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Mr. Ferrish has been very helpful. And then I don't know if you're familiar with Jeff Williamson?
No.
He's a, he's the city's water attorney out of Denver. And he's been listening and giving some good feedback as well. So.
We should pay close attention to that.
Yeah. So, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate your service to the community and what you all done to prove the standard of living of the folks in in Montevista. So the wonderful community and growing up here. I've been here playing basketball here, baseball, have been part of this community nearly my entire life. So I appreciate your dedication to the community. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
That.
All right, we will go to uh, citizen comments, special presentations. Citizen comment first, any citizens? You want to comment?
Ms. Margot Seeder.
Margot. Please don't let us down. It is so good to see you.
It's a pleasure to be here, Councilwoman. I am glad I've got my health picking up again and I can start coming to these meetings. I thoroughly enjoy them and I just want to say I went to the mosquito, the second meeting, one of the best presentations I have ever been to. That lady, I believe her name is Susan.
Sarah.
Sarah. Oh, you started with a S. But she gave one of, I learned more about mosquitoes than I thought possible. And it was a good presentation with good information and fun. And I just want to compliment whoever got this together. It was excellent. And I already noticed there's less monkey mosquitoes in my front yards. We've been spraying, yay. And I also want to say for the flower beds in the city are done. Karen and I finished planning the Superman, set the one and across the railroad track. We finished planning that this afternoon. And all the perennials we planted last year all came back. So pretty soon those gardens will all be in perennials. And the city won't have to put out money for annuals. We'll have to replace some now and then, but we're working on that. And I noticed on Main Street, the flowers that people are putting out and just how pretty our town is. So I just wanted to say I love living here. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Appreciate you finding those flowers. And your time. Anybody else? Okay, we will go to uh, scheduled appearances. And then ordered beyond this portion in the agenda, you have to file the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than um noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Speed limit and stop signs on Morse. Bensky and H- Hulenza. And when you get up there, if you would, state your name and sign that little paper up there, too, please.
My name is Tara Hulenza.
Justin Bensky.
Now, we have handed over a copy of our paperwork. Um, forgive me, I forgot her name.
To Nita.
To me. Okay. Uh, would you all like a copy as well?
Uh, it's in their packets.
It's in their packets.
Yes, so they have it electronically. So thank you.
Okay.
And Tara, I apologize. All we have in your packets is the, your um, agenda request. So if you had additional.
I did.
Okay. We can, we can make copies for everybody and and uh, give it to the council.
I have, I have plenty of copies here, actually.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, question is up. So I'll start with good evening, City Councilwoman Mayor. Thank you for for seeing us tonight. Um, we are currently purchasing the home at Forest Seven Morris Street, and we are here tonight to address traffic violations and concerns on Moore Street. Um, currently it is in dire need of more stop signs, a posted speed limit sign, and children at play signs. Listed below are just a few traffic violations we have caught in the last three days. Uh, we are also reporting as many violations as possible with our home security system. And while we have not been able to get all the footage onto a thumb drive just yet, we're in the process of converting it all and can turn it over to both the police department and city council if and when needed within a reasonable timeframe. Um, the following list is thirty incidents in three days of people blowing through the stop sign and speeding down our street. Um, as you can see with this list provided and with our statements, we feel that there is a dangerous situation on Moore Street with vehicles driving too fast up and down the street and ignoring traffic signs. Um, we as the homeowners at Forest Seven Morris are sincerely requesting that the city add stop signs at the corners of Morrison, Fourth Street in both the northbound and southbound directions. We are also requesting that a speed limit sign replaced on Moore Street and finally that a children at play signs be added to Moore Street. We are bringing this to your attention as well as others. Because as well as others, there are um, people on our street who are in the audience tonight, I hope, and our children voicing concerns about the traffic violations. Uh, we have educated our children on how to safely ride their bikes in the street. They know how to keep an eye out for other cars and to immediately get at the side of the road or onto the sidewalk. However, there have been cars that do not slow down when they see our children on the road actively moving out of the way. My hope is that by adding these stop signs on our streets, it will make the other drivers more aware that there are children in the area and that the added stop sign will create a slower flow of traffic. Um, it's not any here. My street scares me. And I need some help. I need some help on our street, moving down traffic and keeping our kids here in money safe. I know it's not just my street. Um, I've heard multiple complaints about continued traffic violations and speeding and blowing through stop signs throughout the whole town. And I know that they might seem minor, but they're a big deal when your kid's out trying to play. So um, thank you for listening to us. We greatly appreciate your time. And now we would like to hand the podium over to the others in the audience that wish to speak on this matter.
Evening, Mayor. City Councilor Matt Lock. Building and homeowner in Montevista. I'm wearing my concern citizens hat tonight. I mirror much of what was said this evening. Uh, for the record, my involvement is directed this. It is our daughter's home. Uh, our grandchildren live at Forest Seven Morris, and I'm also part owner of that particular property. Uh, my name appears in all the legal documents. So simply put, I feel very strongly that something does need to be done immediately in regards to the speeding and reckless driving that have been observed and I've seen some of it too, uh, on Moore Street. Uh, you know, whether it be a posted speed limit signs, stop sign, Morse and forth, which I think is a real good idea, of both the north and southbound, caution children to play, you know, whatever action the city decides to take, I am fully in support of this and will assist if if need be, or if I can, to help make this happen. Um, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chief.
Yeah, so I'll get with Rob when he gets back. So as far as um, like adding signs and stuff. Um, we had G, we probably on this as well. We have to follow the law. First off, we have to follow the law, traffic code. Then we have to do a traffic study. Um, first and foremost, people we can do, I mean, we can't just go add signs just, you know, you know, what we want. If we just want to put signs in, we have to do a traffic study. So when Rob gets back, I'll get with him. He's on vacation, I think, till the end of the month. Um, but I'll get with him and uh, but yeah, I I mean, I, I mean, traffic study shows and stuff. Absolutely. There's no issues at at all of putting that up and stuff. So yeah, I think he like seems back in the end of the month or something. We'll do a traffic study and uh, and then bring it back. And I I mean, I would think we need to bring it back if a traffic study showed that we need to do it, put up the, we put up the signs. It was just that simple.
So with that, with that traffic study, will we be able to put up the requested signs that they were asking for?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. If um, I I don't exactly have a traffic study of Rob. That's kind of more what he does on on roads and stuff like that. So um, but it's a traffic study. And I don't know the formulas. And I mean, it's, it depends on speed limit or that because it means it's residential, so it's thirty mile an hour speed. Um, you know, and and that, I don't think that we can just change like if you want a bit lower or higher, we have to, we kind of have to follow. Am I right there, G?
Well, the the MTC is not very specific at all what constitutes a traffic study as the state code is. So I think you you've got a little more latitude in there to act probably a little quicker. And when you do, one of the things that we have to have, but I mentioned this when we were enacting the MTC, we need the um, we need the schedule finally done on all the traffic signs and so forth. So we can include these traffic signs that we're talking about here on that schedule in order to have validity uh, in our municipal court. Uh, somebody you know, comes in and says, wait, you didn't put this on your schedule.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's part of it and and one of the reasons. Yeah, so that, I mean, that's part of it and, and one of the reasons you have to do the traffic study and stuff is, I mean. If, if a town owner is like, hey, we want to make revenue, so we'll just go set up a stop sign here or we'll set up a. A speed limit sign or something, you can't do that, you gotta go, you gotta follow their rules, you have to follow or to add new signs and stuff, so. Uh, but soon Rob gets back, we'll do that and then as far as the, um. So, I, I'll see if I can get the, um, one of the things I'll do like they did last night that we had this issue done on six. Was, I'll see if I can borrow State Patrol has a, as a speed, um, trailer and it'll give us the traffic count, the different times in the day, the most, uh. A- as well as the speeds, the average speed and the number of cars and all that, so I'll, I'll get with them and see if I can borrow that trailer and then do it. I've been trying to buy one, but they're, they're. Crazy expensive.
Um, just wondering, is there? I know like at one point we had a lease car with a dummy in it. You know? But you know, I'm not sure.
You know, I mean, um, a- and some of it, I, I'm not gonna make the.
Uh, on the traffic study, you know, based on surveillance, uh, figuring out your system or is it just that?
Well, uh. Well, right, but there's, there's, we. We have to have the actual traffic count and stuff like that, so that's why I'll get borrow State Patrols. Cause you have to be the actual traffic count like.
Uh, but the little rubber strips on.
Yeah, it's associated with the ticker type ones that you see like on the highways, you see the little. Cardboard where that's what C dot. Correct, it does not, it, it doesn't, it does not account for that. But that's why I'll get State Patrols, but what State Patrols does, it will be able to put two different directions like. Northbound, southbound, um, and stuff, and you're right, I mean, it's not going to account for stuff. But what it will do is give us traffic count and give us number of cars that go up and down. And it'll give us peak times that there's traffic on the streets. As well as it will give us the average speed, will give us the fastest speed, will give us the, um, the, yeah, I mean, it's, it's crazy like. And there was people that were attentive about, yeah, passing, so. W- what we do is we'll shut it down, so the speed limit will be thirty, because that's what speed limit is, so that it'll. Um, shuts off at thirty, so people can't see how fast they can get going, because there's idiots out there, they're trying to do that stuff, but. I'll see if I can borrow that, um, actually, I'll maybe try and hit them up tonight and see how quickly I can get that truck. Cause we use it, we use it down on sixth, then I think we use it maybe on Dennis and some of that, and it. So what that really helps us do too is, is it helps us. Really kind of focus on the peak times when there's the most traffic that's going to be out there versus. You know, just sitting out there, somebody says, well, this time or whatever, because I think we did that down. I think it was on Dennis, maybe one street over, and that was really helpful, sitting there and, and doing traffic portion at those peak times.
What is this posted speed limit on Morris right now?
Well, it's the city streets, so it's thirty.
Is, is that posted or is it?
I don't, I, I don't know. Residential areas, so the, uh, the traffic, the traffic code for residential areas, thirty months.
Well, it, it. Would the, um. Maybe if I could see.
And Martha or Councilwoman Law. No city has the resources to put up a speed limit sign in every, on every single block. In their communities, and so, well, so it's just assumed. That. The signs on the, um, edges of the street says. That's fine, and it's just like your county roads. You're not, all county roads are fifty-five miles an hour. So, you're not supposed to know that, and if you get a ticket by the sheriff's office.
It, it's a, speeding is a strict liability crime. When you get your driver's license in Colorado. It, it is assumed. That you know that unless otherwise posted on the city street, it's, it's thirty miles an hour. You also know by getting your driver's license in Colorado, in a business district, that speed limit is twenty-five. And you also know out on an open highway in Colorado, that speed limit is sixty-five unless otherwise posted. That's, so when, when you get your driver's license, expert, every driver in Colorado. You, that is sometimes called strict liability crime, there is no excuses for it. You can't say, well, I didn't know, well, you got Colorado driver's license, so you know.
I was, I simply asked if, if there was a sign and, and. There was nothing behind my question other than. Is there a sign? Cause I, I drive around Montevista all the time and I couldn't tell you where the stop, where the.
Right, but, but so, but.
I don't notice them.
So, but it's a great question, because a lot of people that. They want to argue, they're like, well, I can see a speed limit sign, your driver's license in Colorado or. You're driving state of Colorado, you know, if you're driving through residential area, it's thirty miles an hour, whether it's speed limit sign or not, you know that's what it is. You're in a, out on an open highway, you know it's sixty-five unless otherwise.
Well, the one time I got pulled over, you know, I, officer asked me if I was in a hurry or. And I just had to tell him, no, I wasn't paying attention and I wish I had a better story to tell you, but I know. But it says here. My next question was, um. Oh, they got. Footage of thumb drive, would that help? Would that help you? Would that help to look through that and?
Well, um.
I would think that would give you an idea of, of. Of what's actually happening.
Well, I, I have no doubt that it's happening.
Right, when and who and.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, we'll take that, we'll take footage and stuff, but I, the main thing I'll do is get this, this traffic. I'll say by tomorrow State Patrols, they're not using it, because that's, that's the most. Uh, it's accepted, uh, it's accepted practice of using those to, uh, traffic counts and. Doing some stuff like that, so it's helpful. Yeah, look, I, I have, there's no doubt. Everywhere you go, uh, Colorado has some of the worst drivers in America.
Oh, this is town one, I'm sure. This is town one, I'm sure. Yeah, I, I have no. No doubts whatsoever, I'm sure. Maybe you see people speeding all the time too, and I'm just calling you because I looked up and saw your face.
The other day, I, I called the police, cause. There was a car going. Sixty. Down my residential street, blew by two stop signs and my son was walking out to check the map. I'm like. Sixty. About sixty, I, I didn't have a radar, so I couldn't tell, but. Can hear him.
Well, I mean, just look at the fan count in Colorado, right, uh. Last year, seven, right, for things like leaving Colorado, I mean, it's. Driving, nobody cares about them, whatever, it's a rise, I mean, there's been like two, two shootings over, uh, road rage incidents in Denver, and I was two killed. Uh, shot and killed. Today's going colors or, or in Denver, on a road rage incident, it's just people have no stability when driving anymore, period, and they don't care. Food effects or anything. It is, it's. Unbelievable in their color. It's only getting worse.
What, what were you saying, Mr. Benge, about some latitude? That we have?
Yeah, uh, you know, I. I don't think you've got to do the same protocol that C dot does on one sixty. And two eighty-five, uh, about when they're going to vary speed limits on that. Because the, the MTC after saying it will be the results of speed study. Or, or, yeah, a speed study. It doesn't really go into what you have to do after that. So, some of that information that C dot uses may be of use, but also the observations. Of the folks that just, uh, talked here. Uh, are important also, because you may have a dangerous situation out there. That needs special attention and that enters into your whole equation about what you're going to put up and where you're going to put it up. So I don't think a long drawn out, uh, study is what we've got to go through, but, uh. To follow the MTC, I think you need to have some observations at least.
Observations and some evidence, so I, I agree, so the video that you guys have will be perfect. Along with, we still have to do, I believe we're still have to do traffic count. Instead, and the average speed and stuff like that, and you're right, I mean, um. We can't just go, okay, that's good enough for us, though, we, we have to, we're gonna have to put that together and bring that back to you guys and say, okay, here's. Here's their observations as, and along with this one here. Um, and then here's what our traffic count and average speed and stuff like that showed. And, and it, you know, we had these complaints down on six that. Everybody's doing sixty, seventy miles an hour, watch the end of it and it was all done, the speed limit was thirty-five. The average speed was like forty-one. So it was. Well, right, but I'm saying, everybody's saying, oh, they're doing fifty, sixty and stuff, but. Perception, I, I mean, I've, I've done traffic for a lot of years and the perception, and I get it, and I. Uh, where I live, I'm like, these people are speeding, and you're like, eh, probably not. I mean, it's, you know, a few miles an hour and stuff, but, but still. So, we'll do that, we'll get back together and. I'll see if I can, I don't know how quickly I can get their trailer, but I'll get that along with what they have as well as, um. And, uh, and then we'll take them to Gene and bring them back, yes. I'll try, I, I can't, I mean, I don't know how quickly I can get State Patrol's trailer, but I'm happy to get at least a couple weeks of data from that. And then there's observations and stuff.
So there's a, just. Kind of let you know, um. Down on Sixth Avenue. There's this house that has this little. Kid and it says, uh, kids at play or something like that. I can't tell you how many times I thought it was an actual kid. Yeah, and, and I, and I always, I was like, whoa. Yeah.
And they will see our kids and not slow down.
The same gentleman started shooting.
So. One day I walked out with my shovel. Know what I mean? Cause they were speeding down my block. I'm like. It's, it's terrible, so hopefully we can do something.
But, so we got a plan. And it's going to take a little bit, obviously, but.
So we know it's not gonna be over, and I, I just would like to see signs start happening. I'm tired of hearing, we need the. I've heard that for three years, fighting for custody for the children of none.
We'll all stay in communication on it, and I know George will be in touch with you guys, so we can get this all good together. Thank you, guys. Move to resolutions. So, Mr. Underly.
So we have a resolution twenty-three oh nine. Um, this resolution came for you guys. You guys already approved it in minutes, however, when we were finally at the time. They asked that we would be resolutions for subdivisions. Um, so we're gonna add some resolutions for in subdivisions that we do. So this is the first one that we have, uh, since for the O'Reilly, so I would, I'm gonna abbreviate the legal part. Cause I, I know I can read quickly, but I'm not gonna read all that unless you guys really want me to. Like, so a resolution. Of the Montevista City Council for a minor subdivision of land creating lots one and two of the O'Reilly subdivision. Whereas there has been a plat filed in the city clerk's office on thirteenth day of December twenty twenty-two, and whereas the re. Recorded in Rio Grande County clerk and reporter's office. On the thirteenth day of April and an application for a minor subdivision. Of the following property to wit. A lot of the earths. Label parcel five, three, three, one, three, zero, seven, zero, three, four, which is owned. Of which property is owned by the Rio Grande Southern Railroad Company LLC, and whereas said application appears to be in performance of law and. Whereas City Council of Montevista. Has received written recommendations from the planning commission. After the product, property publication. Notification of adjacent property owners and has compiled with all. Complied with all appropriate legal requirements. To and from a subdivision. Now therefore, let be resolved, the City Council of Montevista. That the flat and res- the resolution is hereby approved. Done and signed this fifteenth of June twenty twenty-three.
I'd make a motion to approve. I'm sorry. The group of selection of the proposals submitted by. Um, Sammy A Construction, it was. I'm, it's what I was reading.
We're on the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh nine, minor subdivision. Creating lots one and two of the O'Reilly subdivision.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number two zero two three dash zero nine. Resolution of the cit- the Montevista City Council for a minor subdivision land creating lots one and two of the O'Reilly subdivision. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really good at reading meets and bounds, but really, where is this?
So this one is at the corner of Broadway and CPF, next to the railroad.
Okay.
So that's a right crossing polish.
Thank you. It's gonna be on the. East side or west side?
So just north of Derek Queen.
Yes. Where there used to be cars and now there are a little more cars.
No, they're still cars.
All right, that's awesome, it's gonna look good there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Savannah?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola?
Hi.
Mayor McCrory?
Hi.
Pushing parties to approve resolution twenty twenty-three. Down zero nine for the minor subdivision creating lots one and two of the O'Reilly subdivision.
Uh, contracts, agreements and leases. Mr. Underly, contract. Good singing again.
Um, you guys have a memorandum for me. Uh, so the RFP went out, got closed, we had three bits. Uh, there was a wide variety of prices. Um, that came in, the highest one.
Mr. Underly, would you please explain what the RFP went out for?
Yes.
Okay.
So RFP for the retailer, uh, facelift of the exterior, including windows, um, some concrete work. Um, some decorative posts. Lighting as well as the garage, it gets. New doors and stuff on the, uh, exterior of this building as well as the garage. Uh, so they'll do a complete uplift of the building once it's complete, including a little quarry at bottom. Um, so we did get three, um, proposals as behind you, as you guys received. Um, the title, there, there's a huge price difference. Um, I did verify with the, uh, bidder that I recommend. That in fact his prices were good, uh, I did talk to all the people that he's bidding with during the bidding process, during the question and answer phase. So I have good faith in his prices, I. I don't think he's gonna mess it up there. Um, and he is able to be bonded, I checked with all of the parts of that, so. I recommend, as my letter says, to go with Sammy A Construction. Uh, for this project. He is projected, if selected, to start in the first week of July and be done, uh, no later than mid-November. I can answer any question you have. You'll notice that there's some selections that were not, um, kept. Uh, which is why his bid price does not match the price that I asked for. Um, we did our, we already completed the concrete creep project, because we had. A short load, so therefore we just grabbed the concrete and we. Or the sidewalks over by the PD. Um, so that part was deleted, which is why his is slightly less than his overall bid.
So based on his bid. We can hold him. Solid on that, but there will be no changes?
Nope, and he actually did not even put anything in force. So he doesn't even have extra for his, if he goes over, he will. Be liable for that.
So I make a motion to approve the proposals submitted by Sammy A Construction LLC. The amount of three hundred fifty, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars and authorized city manager G G Dennis to execute the contract. Second. Been moved in seconded. To approve the proposal submitted by Sammy A Construction LLC. For three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and authorized G G Dennis. City manager to sign the contract once completed. Is there any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes. So. Having looked at, when you see bids like that, I mean, I always get you pause, this is great. Can, can you tell where the difference is between the prices that is in labor, materials?
So, uh, as you look at the proposals, uh, proposal from Alcon had a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in mobilizations. Um, so, uh, good. That is where Sammy had four thousand. If you look at the one from Van Nuys Warden, the windows were a hundred thirteen thousand. Versus, uh, having Sammy, which was, uh, forty-eight thousand. So. I think I know what happened, I don't want to speculate as to why their bid is so low, except for. Probably overhead, plus I think Alcon's is the shoveling of other jobs to complete this business for them. Except for opposite probably overhead, plus I think Alcon's is the shuttling of other jobs to complete business for them. And that's that mobilization base to shuffle or drop your rent.
Yeah.
So yeah, I think that's a big portion of that.
But otherwise, some of the elements of the bids you feel comfortable with in terms of labor and. Yes, materials that they're reasonably comparable.
A lot of those are all the the the, so the windows and the succo were required by the contract. So there's no variation in those. They were all bidding the same products.
Okay.
Um, so it's the labor side of it. But it is a lot of it, and it's Sammy. Does most of the labor. He may or may not have been the bidder for some of those things for those other contractors. So therefore, he knew what theirs was. Um, as well as some of the other subcontractors that are working for him. So there should probably some differences in there. But the fact that it's a smaller company. Um, less overhead, I think, is a huge part of it. Plus he does a lot of his own labor.
Yeah.
The other portion of this council is that. We had gone out and sought just stucco. And so from, we've received two from two different companies. And then when we realized what the size of this project was going to be. You know, we're gonna have to do an official RFP and um. And so. Mister. Um, sorry, Sammy, I don't remember his last name. Mister Atencio. Was one of the original bidders. Of those first two. So we kind of, and and both bids were somewhat in the similar ballpark. And so we kinda knew what the base of just the um. Stucco was going to be. So. And we had also gotten a separate bid on just the windows. And so we knew kind of where that goes. And so Mister Atencio was um. Smart, I believe he's working with one of these other. Contractors that submitted bids.
Yes.
And then he decided to submit his own. And went out and got his own contractors and said, let's, let's put together a bid. And so. I was like you, I was quite surprised at the difference in the costs and concerned about. You know, do we get what we paid for? He comes with very um. Happy clientele, some good. Good recommendations and we feel. We feel we've got the real deal.
He did, uh, he did the original, it's one of the subcontractors he was working with was one of the original, he will we contacted about windows. Um, so. We kind of were wanting to be in also during question and answer session when they were all standing there. Um, one of them asked, um, what's my budget? I didn't see a reason reliable. So I told him it was three hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And he came in slightly above that. But the other ones told them like, I can't, I can't meet three fifty. You still want me to turn a bit? Absolutely. Cause I don't know what your bid's gonna look like, so. I'm gonna have to go to council and ask for more. He didn't ask for more, he just asked what you needed, I think. So, yeah, I feel good about the bid.
Just curious, what projects has he done, you know?
He's done Mister Farish's Law Office and one of his rentals.
Those good work. He's worked for uh. And now doing some of his buildings. He also did some of the uh, the jobs that Alcon has on theirs. He was the person that did the stuff for some of their projects that they had on theirs.
He's a bond in for the full amount of the project.
He can bond problems double price of the project, but he is gonna be bonded at the price of the project, yes. It was required, we required a hundred percent bond.
Yeah.
We did keep the bond at only a hundred percent. Because we didn't want to kick out the smaller people. We didn't wanna try to get bonded a hundred and fifty percent and the smaller bidder would be able to participate.
Any more discussion? Morana.
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Pushing carries to approve this selection of the proposal submitted by Sammy A Construction LLC to increase the funding amount to three hundred fifty-seven. Thousand, three hundred authorized G G Dennis to sign the contract once completed.
Audit extension.
Mayor Council members. Um, we need to uh, discuss the audit. Lawson Bateman has not been able to come and. Um, complete our audit because of scheduling issues on their part. Um. And they probably won't be able to get here for another month, Kimberly said. So because we're local government, you're required to complete and submit a copy of our audit. By June thirtieth of each year. And if we can't, we have to file um, an extension form and it has to be signed. Um, I put you on it. I know, right? Um, so. The extension will give us another sixty days, so it should help cover um. To give uh, Lawson Smith enough time to get here, to get it completed. Um, so I would ask that you would sign it and just that you'll approve the extension. I can submit it.
Do we usually use Lawson Smith's name? I'm sorry, do we usually use Lawson?
This will be their first year. We put um, our audit out for RFP last year and. They were awarded another comment she made when she was talking there, so busy and they've lost um. Some staff that that was essential to. Her audits, um. And uh, she said it was. They even had to withdraw from one of their clients. Um, and so I was thankful they didn't withdraw from us when I was first here with them. Um, but she said they've been really, really busy.
Who's she?
Kimberly.
Make a motion to approve. The filing of the audit extension signed by a day.
Thank you.
Seconded. It's been moved in seconded to approve the extension of the audit. And have the mayor sign. Is there any more discussion? Morana.
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Pushing carries to approve the audit extension signed by um, Mayor Becker.
Okay, we'll go to staff reports. And I'm gonna call him just as uh, Love Anna wrote him. Right. He's gonna wreck it.
No, the fun part, yeah, okay. So. Lots of things going on with uh, recreation parks, the sports, I'm gonna leave out for a little bit. Baseball's going fine.
Yeah.
Like there, it's one of the parents that's part of our baseball program. Um, they're missing an umpire today, so I'm gonna have to excuse myself after this, but I need to go umpire. Um. But uh. The, uh, we're gonna talk about bid, big, bid is a background investigation bureau. So all of our coaches now and officials will be having a background check and then go into computer system on our website. And they initiate themselves, they can even go in and check their status. And then um, Judy would receive a report from them, not as gay or nay, or if something's going on with them. Um, say now that we uh. We are gonna be able to use your services now, so all of our folks from here on out will be screened, volunteer coaches. Uh, the only thing that we won't be screening is uh, teenagers volunteering. That's uh, that's one of the thing. We have partnership with an organization called Youth Works. Um, it it provides price-centered mission trips. For thousands of teenagers and adult leaders in communities across the United States and beyond. Um, it's a multi-dimensional. Denom- I'm sorry, multi-denominational. Uh, mission trips, they come from all over the country. We have twelve folks that we get um. Every Monday and Wednesday out at Sky High, they're helping out inside the building as well as at the ball fields. Uh, pretty much they just do everything. They're awesome. They show up on time, that whatever we ask them to do, they do. I mean, picking up rocks, we pulling weeds. Cleaning uh, the upstairs at the ball fields and whatnot, so they're doing a great job. For us there. Can't understand the people from Tennessee, but um, you know, just don't understand what they're saying, so I'm gonna have to get a translator for them.
I'll volunteer.
But uh, baseball's off although so far it's going great and it's just a matter of getting umpires out there. That's uh. But that's all I have for. Um. For a wreck. Any questions? And you wouldn't have any, thank you.
Pause long at all there.
Yes, I did go up, cause I just go there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Durbin.
Thank you for all you do. Kids Connection.
Good evening, um. Actually have a bunch of information for you. I've had a very busy three weeks and I have a lot to throw at you tonight. Um, we're currently in our third week of the summer program. Um, I have seven full-time summer staff right now, including myself and Jesse. So just the five additional, we have two volunteers that are with us through the Alpine Achievers or the Americor volunteers. Um, they were in the school district throughout the school year and they still had hours throughout the summer, so we have them until the. Fourteenth of July. Um, and then they will be complete with their work with Americors and they go back to where they are from. I have one of them is from. North Carolina, the other one is here from California, so they get to go home at the end of the summer. Um, the one from uh. The one volunteer that I have, her name is Kirsten, she actually asked if she could stay through the end of July. Um, so I've talked with Judy about um, getting her on payroll for the last two weeks because I really need. Her to stay, I need all of them to stay, but we're gonna hold on to any of them as long as we possibly can. Um, I also have one adult volunteer who was a member of Kids Connection, uh, when he was in elementary school, he disappeared. Or he was with us in elementary and middle school. Once he got to high school, he decided he was too cool for us, but he graduated this year. And came back to me and asked for a job, but positions had already been full at that time. So he's actually coming in and volunteering every day so that we can get him trained in everything he needs to do to become a staff member. So at the end of the summer, when I'm hiring after-school positions, he has that under his belt and it's just a plus for me. Cause I don't want to put all of that training to get him going, so hopefully he will stick with us and you can keep him. Um, we currently have, so at the end of, or at the beginning of every summer. We renew membership for the year, so instead of doing it like January for an entire year, it goes July or June to June. Um, so for this summer, which membership just started at the end of May, I have a hundred and fifteen members registered with Kids Connection. Those are just summer kids. Um, numbers will boost again once we hit. The school year and we have all of our after-school kids. Um, my after-school program kids are completely different from my summer kids. We got a whole new group of kids coming in for the summer. Nine hundred and fifteen of them registered as of today. Um, I have currently a forty-six of them are in the K through second grade group and the third through fifth grade group. So forty-six in K through second, forty-six in third through five, and then I have twenty-three. That are in sixth grade or older. Seven of those twenty-three are high school students, surprisingly. Um, and they're all high school students that were with us in K through five, but they got to middle school and we were not the cool place to be. Then they came back to us now they're in high school and I don't understand it, I'm not gonna fight it because. It's great to have some, some of them. Some of them were just like, please go find a job. But we keep those uh, thoughts to ourselves, because we do truly enjoy them, they're just a little, they're a little more difficult to work with. When they get a certain age. Um, so our first week of summer, we averaged about fifty-five kids every day. Um. Last week, we were averaging seventy-five, this week our average hit sixty-five. So we have been extremely busy and we hit about forty kids by, we open at seven thirty, but eight o'clock, we already have at least forty in the door. Um, our next wave comes between eight and nine when I serve breakfast and then the last. Twenty of our kids who are in summer school right now, we get a really big rush of additional kids right at twelve o'clock when they get let out of summer school. Um, so I serve breakfast and lunch every day. Um, currently my lunch sir, or my both breakfast and lunch services. I have served nine hundred and sixty-eight individual meals. Um. I've served over a hundred and twenty-one gallons of milk in three weeks. Last week, I ran out of food every day. I didn't anticipate the numbers that we had coming in. Usually, well, because of COVID, numbers have dropped drastically. And the last three years or last two years of the summer program, I've only served like a maximum of fifty kids. Um, during summer meal service and I got hit with like seventy-six on the day of last week. And I ran out of food. Um, so Safeway became my best friend and I was running over there clearing out their shelves because I didn't have enough food. And then I got ahead of myself and ordered food from Cisco, um, cause they are our main food distributor for the summer program. And I completely forgot vegetables, so it was a whole, it's much fun. I don't like, I don't like shopping to begin with. Um, and then when you forget a food item and have to go back to try to make a complete meal, it's been a lot of fun. Um. So. That's literally been my life. I'm the cafeteria lady during the summer. I get to deal with food and disciplinary issues when. We have an issue with the kiddo, they come my way and I have to try to figure out. What happened and how to deal with it. Um, so our programming for the summer, we currently have a visitor coming over from the library every Thursday. Um, Maria Sears comes over from um. One thirty to two o'clock to read to our our kiddos and she just reads books to our K through second group. Um, they're interested in doing a mobile book library or with their summer book program that they have going on for our kiddos. So they're gonna bring over some books that our kids can take home with them. Once they read them, they come back and share it and then they get credit for all of the work that they do. Um, like Durbin spoke on the Youth Works um, organization, Kids Connection's been working with Youth Works since twenty nineteen. COVID put a halt on that, but then they're back with us this year. Um, and they. Are an amazing help. Um. They come in, they're willing to just jump in and interact with kids and play with kids and just entertain kids. Um, they're mainly middle school and high school age youth that are volunteering with an adult chaperone. Um, so the fact that they're going over to Sky High and doing all of that work, then it's not a. Large group of adults, they're middle school and high school age um, group kiddos, so. It's pushing my middle school and high schoolers to see that they could have a lot more responsibility and I would be willing to give them that responsibility. If they showed up and presented themselves the way the Youth Works organization um. Sends their kiddos to us. For whatever reason, our middle schoolers and high schoolers are not capable of doing the work, but these volunteers are coming in and doing, I feel bad saying it, but. If you've ever interacted with any of our middle school or high schoolers. Some of them, it's shocking that they can even tie their shoes. Not joking. I love my kids this week. Um. Our K, their second program is running an I N E T program, which is an innovative nutrition education program. Um, they teach nutritional education, um, and then they get to enjoy some healthy snacks because of it. Um, it's run through the Rocky Mountain Research Centers and C U N shoots in the Colorado School of Public Health. Um, so they provide us all of the food for that, that's not additional food. I'm trying to figure out. Um, they bring us in bags for two lessons a week, they run a lesson and then they get to eat food. So it's basically just talking about fruits and vegetables, it might be need to. And um, eat those throughout the um, day and then working on just healthy habits, making sure hands are washed. Um, proper hygiene, stuff like that. Um, I spoke a little bit about our um, social emotional curriculum the last time I was here, but we have. Finally purchased a social emotional learning curriculum, it's called Wayfinder. And um, Wayfinder was born at the Sanford, Stanford Institute of Design. Um, when they asked one key question about how they can re- reimagine adolescent education to develop a student sense of meaning and purpose. Um, so Wayfinder's platform is designed by teachers for educators, so it's people that have been hands-on in the classroom and tried to. Decipher curriculum and figure out how to put it in a language where kids can understand. They've done all of that work for us. It is so simple that we log on to their platform, we can type in a keyword of issues that we're seeing um, in the classroom, so like. Communication was a big one this week. All they have to do is go onto Wayfinder, type in communication, they think about how much time they have to go over a specific lesson. And the lessons are as short as five minutes, up to like an hour-long lesson, they have activities that are based around it. And they have key talking points, so all of the homework is done for the staff. They don't have to try to understand the curriculum before they teach it because they literally pull it up and hit step by step how to walk through it. And it is um, in. And it is um, in a language that they could communicate with even our kindergarteners on. So um, we're super excited about working with Wayfinder. Um, Wayfinder was purchased through the Health and Mental Health Grant that we got through the state last year. Um, I pushed that grant over to this year because it was too late in the year to even think about making any purchases for that grant. Um, and I thought immediately about the summer program because we have kids um, ten hours a day that we really needed a curriculum that made sense for us. And this one is um, the platform is kindergarten through high school. Um, most of the social emotional curriculum we've been able to find is early childhood education and it just doesn't translate to kids that can walk and talk. Um, so staff is having a lot of success with that. Um, yesterday our twelve and older group took a field trip to the Boys and Girls Club in Alamosa. They got to visit the teen center, which is downtown and hang out at the arcade and just interact with some of the kiddos there. Um, the Boys and Girls Club reached out to Jesse and said, hey, we don't have any teens in our teen center. Um, they were only seeing like three to five kids a day and Jesse's like, I have teens I can take you. So we worked on something that would work for us. They came down and picked us up and they went up there and hung out for the day. Um, we're gonna try to make that and hopefully every other week we can get them up there. It just depends on the Boys and Girls Club schedule of busing. Um, let's see. I just finished submitting another grant through the AT&T Foundation for some additions to the tech room. Um, that was a very last minute push. I struggled to get it together, but did get it submitted. Um, we're looking at adding an integrative um, interactive projector in the tech room so that when our um, when our kiddos are on the Chromebooks, we have something that is available for our younger group of kids that aren't really ready to jump up, jump on a Chromebook. So um, it has educational-based curriculum on it. So like a game of uh, like Whack-a-Mole is a basic um, math game for them on this specific type of um, program that we are hoping to purchase. Um, with that, we will also be doing some digital uh, literacy training and translating that to our parents. So they understand how the internet works. They understand what they should be looking for. They understand that there are parental controls that all parents should go through and monitor for their kiddos. Um, we want to just make sure that they fully understand what is being handed to their child when they give them a smartphone. Um, and just get our parents on the same page as our kids. Um, we're gonna purchase some steam kits for the um, tech room so that we have, we can do some more intentional science-based learning in that room on Fridays during the school year when we have kids all day. And then we have also brainstormed a new program that we are hoping um, to bring to the tech room and we're gonna call it the Pirate Ship and play off of the Mona Vista Pirates, but our idea is similar to um, like Shark Tank. And we have our three D printer. We have a heat press for T-shirts there. Um, with everything that we're trying to put into that room and the steam kits, we're hoping to encourage our kids to really think outside of the box and try to come up with some sort of business plan that they can put together on their own and with the supplies that we can provide for them at Kids Connection. Um, we're gonna talk to some business leaders in the community and get them on a, on board with us so that our kids actually pitch this business plan to the community business leaders. And they can give them some valid feedback about whether or not this sounds like something that would make sense or not. Um, and then the hope is that our kiddos can create a online platform to sell their creation and create a revenue stream for our tech room so that we can continue to provide the supplies for those kids to make a small percentage of the funds from. And then a lot of it's gonna go back into purchasing supplies, allowing the tech room to be as self-sustainable as possible. Um, let's see. I was afraid that Margot was gonna call me out about the garden because I have that pole and wider when she said that I looked at uh, Gigi and I was like, oh no, I wanna just hide it. Um, I'm working on that tomorrow. It is. It's a big piece of uh, weeds. Yes, yes. Yeah. So I'm gonna get started on that tomorrow and then next week we have a group ready to go over and help get that finished. So in the next couple of weeks, you should see some beautiful flowers and less weeds in that chunk of dirt. Um, okay, I've been working with Rio Grande County Public Health and they have started to create what is called a Prosper Team. Um, and it is, oh, I forget what the acronym for the, for Prosper is, but it's basically a preventative education that is coming to um, Rio Grande County. And so they have a bunch of leaders that work with kids. Um, and it's created to, it's targeted towards middle school students. Um, and it is a program that reduces risky youth behaviors, enhances positive youth development and strengthens families. Um, so since I see some middle school kiddos, we're working with them to figure out how we can push the curriculum, get my staff trained in the curriculum, and that's an additional um, positive youth development and prevention type um, activity for them. Um, I was also asked to help with the oversight of Youth Prevention Council with Rio Grande County. Um, Kids Connection has done a lot of this work before with um, Rio Grande Prevention Partners, but when we lost the grant for Prevention Partners, it all kind of disappeared. So Rio Grande Public Health um, is in the works of getting it all started up again and Kids Connection is going to jump on board again because it is very important work to be done with our youth. Um, I told you I have a lot. Our air conditioning project is slowly in the works. They have been coming, well, they came last Friday and I think that they are just coming on Fridays to get majority of the work done when there's no kids in the building. Just because of all of the extra stipulations that I had laid out that needed to be done in order to have a bunch of strangers working construction in my building. Um, so I think they just decided Fridays make sense for them since there's nobody in the building. They can get in and out and not have to worry about kids being there. Um, and then in the next two weeks I will be receiving, I believe it, I think it's eight. Uh, portable HEPA air filter system. Um, and these were provided to us free of charge um, through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Um, it includes two years of filters for those systems and I purchased, well, I didn't purchase. I um, have two of them going in each of our spaces because of how large the, the rooms are. And I also got two of them for unfinished space so that they are ready to go when that space is up and operating. Um, and this came through the Clean Air for Schools program. And like I said, it's completely free of charge for Kids Connection because we are a licensed childcare facility. And I believe it was somewhere around like eighteen thousand dollars with equipment. So yeah. We're excited to have clean air in the building. You know, just see the kids right. It's, I'm, I've had so much fun this week, so. You have any questions for me?
You're busy, there's no doubt.
Just a little.
And again, thank you for what you do and your staff.
Thanks.
That's our future, so.
My tougher rocks start this summer. I don't, we've had them crying each day. We've had them look at me like, I don't know what I got myself into, but we'll make it through. Oh, I forgot the, the best part. I have a countdown to midsummer break. We're T minus eight working days before we all get a week off. I'm doing all my prep work. Not next week, but the week after so that I do not have to be at all for anything to prepare for the, that's I'm taking an official week off.
Well, these are.
Thank you.
City manager. That's how she laid it down today. What's up?
Yeah, planning.
She didn't write planning in there.
I, I can go last, go with you.
Sorry, no, you can go ahead. Um, we're gonna back it up. You, Jean, and then Gigi.
So uh, first, thanks for approving the compact of the building. I'm excited to get this project started. Uh, we've already started the work on the city side of what we needed to do. We removed the tree from inside the courtyard today. Uh, we removed a couple of other things. We'll remove some more trees that are right next to the building that'll have to get taken down. Um, so I'm kind of excited to see this start going along. It was a project that almost a year ago when I came on board, Gigi said, hey, what do you think about trying to get this done? So I'm kind of excited to see this project will end through. It only took us a year to get here. So now we just gotta get, I'm excited about that. Um, planning and zoning is gonna have a work session in June. Um, instead of regular meeting, we don't have any business per se. Um, nothing has come in. Uh, but we are going to work through chapter twelve with KLJ. Um, we're gonna also look at a website that will be stood up or the rewrite of chapter twelve. Um, and so that website will be linked to our, our websites, but it will capture specific information about the land use code. Um, and we're gonna begin our public process starting in August. Um, we were gonna start a little bit earlier, but we figured through the summer, it didn't make a lot of sense. Everybody's gonna be going here and there. We're not gonna be able to attract a lot of people. We're gonna have a harder time getting information out. So once the kids get back into school and we can pass a lot of information through the system, we're gonna start working with the parents and try to get them into the meetings and whatnot. Um, so we're gonna work on that. The public engagement will go from about August until give or take October because we want to get through first reading in November so that we can pass it by the county or um, which is what our contract says. Over the last two months, I've been working with Access Gov through a company called Tyler. Um, so Access Gov is, we have our website through and through them, there's a contract that we can create online forms. So by the end of this month, we'll have three of my forms um, that you can complete electronically. As long as it works like advertised, then I'll add the rest of planning, community developments, forms on board. And then each director, as they um, see the progress, they'll add theirs on there. So that hopefully eventually we'll be able to be a mostly digital organization from uh, a public perspective, which will cut down on man-hours. Because right now we print a document, we blow up a document, we get back the document, then we scan the document and then we throw away the original. So we're gonna cut some steps out and just have it all digital. Uh, so we're working through that. That's been a, a long process, but it's almost done. Uh, earlier this month, I submitted a USD grant uh, with the Forest Service uh, to develop a plan to increase our urban canopy, remove trees and plant five hundred trees. Um, this is a non-matching grant, so if I get everything I wanted to, this will be uh, some significant funds that will come in to plant trees and do some planning for that. Um, it'll also help us get rid of some diseased trees and cut down end-of-life trees. So we can replace them with some healthy trees. It'll increase our biodiversity as well as provide canopy coverage in places we don't have them, such as out by Terrible Soul, some of the parks, some Sky High, some middle school, whole bunch of things that we're gonna do there. So I turned that in earliest month. I'll find out about that probably sometime September, October. And then we'll go from there if I get it. Hopefully I do. Currently working for or with San Luis Valley Go on Safe Streets for All Grants. Um, so this grant will uh, if we get it, will fund an action plan that will be a part, part of the Valley Trail. Um, which if you don't know what the Heart of the Valley Trail is, it will be a trail that will eventually start in Mulsford and go all the way over to South Fork. Um, the first leg of the trail will be from Alamosa to Mona Vista. And so we're working with S O B Go to start the planning process. Part of this trail and part of the planning process will be an action plan to make Sherman into a ninety-degree intersection. Over the last three years, there's been twenty accidents with fifteen percent of those being either injury or fatalities. Um, so we're gonna work through Safe Streets for all to make that into a ninety-degree intersection. And that will be the point that the trail crosses from the south side of one sixty to the north side of one sixty. So we'll have a protected crossing there for people coming down the trail to then get onto our multimodal sidewalk. That construction will hopefully begin next summer. Um, so that's that part of the, the thing I'm working on. So why I bring it up to you guys is after a discussion with Rob Vance, um, in the next two years, in twenty cent fund, we do have the funds that I would need for the matching cycle, which would be twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four and twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. As I submit this grant, I don't need a vote, but I do want to make sure that you're at least a head nod that you guys approve of me placing this grant. And then as we do the budget, that'll get approved through that process if we get there. But I wanted to make sure I don't want to go down a route that you guys don't support. So is anybody seeing issues with me applying for that grant?
The grants for the trail?
The grant for our portion will be for Sherman. We're doing it in conjunction with them because that crosses the threshold for prices and also makes it multi-jurisdictional because Alamosa County, Alamosa City um, and Rio Grande, I'm meeting with Rio Grande County Commission next week. Um, they're all hopefully gonna sign on. We've got some commitment from Alamosa City and Alamosa County. Uh, Rio Grande, they're gonna listen to us next week and then we'll make some decisions there. Um, so they're going to fund the trail portion through county and Alamosa. We're only looking at funding the intersection Sherman. Um, that's our portion. We have new two hundred thousand dollars to plan that. Um, and then after that, we'll become a mutation grant. So.
Sure.
Um, after I get done with that grant, I'm going to be working on the grant for our new master plan that we discussed before. Our last one was twenty sixteen, uh, which was a joint with Rio Grande County. Um, and we really do need to update it. A lot of the grants want to hear what you're asking for to be inside your master plan. So like if you want to put in trails, you need to add trails inside your master plan. You want to do streets, you want to do sidewalks, you want to do many of those things. They want them inside of fire. And our current one is seriously lacking in some detailed projects. So we want to make sure that we add those in there so we can become more competitive for some of these grants that keep coming up. Um, the water view project uh, next week, public work will provide one person, they're going to look at all the meter pit ones and then the, on the week of June twenty-sixth, uh, working in public works, they will replace twenty-three meters um, for testing. You know, send ours off, put on some new ones. Once we get that information, they'll submit for the Water Smart Grant and they'll come back with information to you guys for, you know, what that project would look like, how it prices out and give some better solid numbers. Um, so just wanted to update you where we're at with that. And then next week I'll be attending the entrepreneurship summit at Adam State University, which is just a single day. Uh, but it's for a bunch of entrepreneurs at Adam State Business, um, students. And hopefully trying to see if some of those more promising projects, you might go find a home forum here in Miles. Try to bring in some new businesses. Uh, so that's kind of a lot of what I've been doing. Any questions?
I'm just really curious what you do in your free time.
A lot of things. Vision, a lot of vision.
Thank you, DJ.
Thanks, guys.
Now I'll go to the city attorney.
I think I'm gonna read to you from the judge. They are counsel. Um, well, the majority of my time at the city this and uh, this since last time, really been spent on uh, Cora requests. And you'd think that that would be a simple thing and kind of dry cut to respond to these requests, but it's anything but that. Um, we've uh, first of all, we're working with three different statutes here. The uh, the Colorado Open Records Act, uh, the uh, Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act and now the Law Enforcement Integrity Act, uh, which have different provisions in them and we've got to analyze these requests in terms of uh, what those specific statutes provide for. This is one of those areas that if you provide the, the wrong thing, uh, you may get in, get sued for doing that by uh, somebody that uh, you've invaded their privacy on them. And if you don't um, provide the right thing, you may get sued by media or someone else uh, for not providing that. So you've got to analyze all these requests and just to uh, give you an example, um, we've got uh, the Colorado Sun, for example, newspaper wanting all the footage on the police shooting, um. And they're saying, well, you know, the district attorney has already released uh, footage. Uh, I mean, we look at it, no, the DA released seventeen still shots for that whole thing. And we've got to pay attention to what the, the rest of the statute says about the family. Nobody's, there's no allegations of policeman's conduct in this and the family has not uh, said that we should release any footage at all. So um, the uh, the answer to them is, no, we're not releasing that because we think we've violated the law to do it. Um, and then uh, it runs us all the way from that down to uh, some, uh, an officer taking a a kid home that violated the curfew because he's acting strange. And all of a sudden now the uh, one member of the family that uh, is not apparently the custodial parent wants the footage of And all of a sudden now, the uh one member of the family that uh is not currently the custodial parent wants the footage of. The uh officer taking his kid home. Um so you've got to analyze that also, and then uh we've got the um Public Defender's Office making routine. Um requests in for um. All the IA files and disciplinary actions in the police department, so that they'll have that ammunition to examine the officers with, so we've gotta analyze. That kind of stuff also of what we can and can't disclose there, so. This is uh George and I spent a lot of time here on this during the past couple of weeks. Um so um. That's one thing we've been doing, um. The uh. All of you have the code, I think, do you not? First, you accomplished that, I think what you don't have in there probably is copies of the policies. If you look in there under um administration, the uh. City passed an ordinance uh in at the beginning of. Twenty seventeen, which was the month after my departure from the city in twenty sixteen, saying uh that that we would not um. Uh codify the policies, and I can understand that actually, because it, you know, it does involve some expense. My, so my suggestion was that we, that the clerk um just make copies of all the policies. And put them into the binders. And uh because these policies are, they change a lot faster than the code, actually, and I think it's more efficient to do that. So that uh those policies would be available to you, because you're actually accessing more of the policies. Answer your questions usually than you are having to look at the code. So we've got the policies on everything from the organizational chart, your rules of procedure, to the uh personnel policy. The bidding and purchasing policy, uh the open records policy, the consolidated fee schedule. And these are all things that I'll be, wanna be familiar with. Uh and even now, uh one policy of the records retention policy, also, so you've got about seven policies in there. It would be fairly easy to uh do those, I think, we just. I give those to you, uh free hole punch, and you can insert right into your binder, what I did is uh cannibalize uh. The tabs from my old code there, and uh that might be enough of those floating around, and if we have to get new tabs, I don't think that the um. qualification, many code would really charge you much just for giving you section of tabs there to separate that out, so that was my suggestion anyhow to. Um to the uh city clerk and um the judge. Um. The uh we had, uh first of all, let's see. Okay, so I had a conference with Anita, uh we're looking at the uh. One percent sales tax distribution and kind of the history of that, so I had to. Go start digging into my old files to figure that thing out, and we did the, we did find those files, and I think we kinda came to a consensus of. What the that looked like uh in that particular topic. Uh had a uh Monavista U R A meeting on six, six or twenty-three, the housing project funding, and uh. DJ will be uh giving me some stuff on uh who to contact there and what documents are. Uh so that we can get some of those restrictions removed on uh the deeds and so forth. Um. The question was raised with uh the I G A, so I had uh. I guess I was, I brought up the fact when they first uh. Postured that I G A and they had it only with counties, that the municipalities should probably be involved in the whole thing too. And they did put the municipalities in, so it went from six to twenty-three separate uh governmental entities real quick. Um it's um. My suggestion to them was, look, just, let's make this simple about the the municipalities and the whole thing. That uh it only applies to exports of water and municipalities are uh excluded from uh any. Considerations of being designated and having to get permits for any of their own projects. And I guess that was too simple a suggestion, uh so what they came out with, and which is what Cleve was. Kind of talking about is something that we had to really analyze in terms of how you you go about. Avoiding that whole bureaucratic thing of having to apply for permits, which when we read that, and you read section. Three on there, it says, it talks about the the that the uh members, which would include the city. Uh and shall designate areas of state interest, which includes municipal projects, and once you include that. Then you, the next thing is, if you, if you've got a project then that is a matter of state interest, you have to um get permit. Well. Uh you gotta go to the next section to figure out, well, that's an exclusion. Uh so that's sort of one of the things we had some hesitation with, so I spent about an hour on phone with Jeff Williamson the other day. And um they're going to, he's gonna want to um address this issue with you at the uh July the sixth meeting. Uh and probably part of it in executive session, uh I think he is comfortable enough with the redraft that they did, but uh. As Cleve was saying, I think the language is a little bit obtuse and uh. And unclear, and you've gotta go at it from the back end to figure out that you're not involved with the permitting process. Um. So um. I request there to to uh dig out all the stuff on, I'm really sorry, that's six eighty-eight. That uh dealt with the permanent closure of uh Second Avenue and the uh. At the alley west of Mars Street, and the history surrounding that issue, so I did that, was able to locate that stuff. Provided it to Gigi and DJ, so uh that's a chance to digest that, thanks for some interesting reading. Um. I'll be at C M L another week, uh Seth will also be there, uh I think Gigi's going, and I don't know who else, let's see. Uh but uh I'll be available by cell phone if you need me, because Seth's one with me too, so. Um will be at that meeting, um. Twenty-one cases on the docket uh for next week, uh nothing particularly remarkable about those. Um. Today is Bob Richards' first day under release, June fifteenth, and I'm hoping that's going to go for him. Um other than that, uh. Happy Father's Day to all you guys, sorry about that. Wish all fathers happy Father's Day, you have any questions, if not, that's all I have.
Thank you, June. I wanted you to read me some stuff out of that book, though.
Do you?
And you want DJ to come up and give us needs and downs?
You just wanna start with the first half, Victor? Yes, just first half. Good evening, everybody, um one thing that we do need a a vote on is that for the C M L meeting coming up. Uh we need one council member to do the voting, and Victor and Martha are both going, so. Protocol, I'm assuming it's Victor, but it's also important to know if you're gonna be able to make it. There are um in your packet, you got, or not in your packet, but in your email, you've got the whole packet from C M L on what they're gonna be voting on and that sort of thing. But that meeting is on June the twenty-seventh at two fifteen, which is on Tuesday.
I'm certainly do, willing to do whatever is necessary, but I believe that. Uh for Mayor Proton Victor Segal was much more experienced, uh this'll be my first C M L. Conference, and I believe he's done this before, so maybe I need to watch the wisdom.
I'd be fine.
Okay, you'll, you're gonna be there, okay, um.
I will be there as long as everything stays stable with my dad. So we're still going through all that, so I I plan on being there, I don't plan on missing it unless I absolutely have to be gone.
So we'll list you as the voting member and Martha you as the alternate, and um. You know, seemed like last year there was a conflict, and I didn't go to all of it. On for the business meeting, but especially if you're not there, you and Martha tag along, or I can go with you, and we can just all listen together, so that'll be fine. The Valley Theater did get transferred today or yesterday. Bob has already made some very positive changes in there, and is really excited and walked in and made his first lease payment today as well, so paying ahead. Uh this weekend, the city of Monavista will get, will be the sponsor of their. Their free movies that they're gonna show, so everybody is encouraged, you can go watch E T on Friday at one o'clock. On Saturday is the Barony Kid. And then Saturday evening, there is a three dollar charge if you wanna go watch The Godfather, that's at seven. And then Field of Dreams will be another free movie on Father's Day, also at one o'clock. So take your kids or grandkids or some of the neighbor kids or something. Uh Fox twenty-one was in town this week, we had, Fox twenty-one is out of Colorado Springs Pueblo. And they had hosted a lunch, maybe a month or so ago, announcing that they were going to be doing. Kind of a whole week segment about San Luis Valley and why to travel here. And so um I think Stephanie, if I recall correctly, brought to you guys. She bought a uh a package of. So many spots that would be played as TV commercials during that week, focusing all on Sky High Complex. So we took Dale downtown, they interviewed him on main, on Adam Street. We had George at the skate park, and then I did, uh was at the Sky High. So I don't know what they'll put together, if it's actually only thirty seconds and you just see a face. Or if it's, you know, like a two-minute whatever, but anyway, we got to the, to promote Monavista and say some very positive things about it. Uh I'm meeting with Representative Martinez on Tuesday, and he called and extended the invitation, so I'm gonna see what what's on his mind. And um how we move forward with that good relationship, I think it was a benefit this last session. That he had served on council and would, you know, kind of understands more of issues that impact directly the city. And then I get him scheduled to also make a little brief appearance like Senator Simpson was able to do tonight, and um get on our schedule. Let's see, to this Friday is the third Art Walk, Art. Uh deal downtown, so we'll be closing off Adam Street again. Um. See, I wanna, oh, uh from what Jean said, do you all want me to print out all that paper for you to put in your codebook? If you wanna see all those policies, I'm happy to email them to you, and then you can just save them in your. But if you'd like.
Have in my computer?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
The drawing could be great.
I'll do that, otherwise it'd take a lot of paper and a lot of time, but happy to do it, whatever you guys, whatever makes it easier on you. And then just wanna say Happy Father's Day, so to all of our dads on on the city team, all the grandfathers, all the uncles and. And uh it's gonna be a good, going into another good week. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, we've got, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of balance the whole, how many grants do we continue to. Buy for, because the the work then comes of how do you continue to make sure all of those projects. Obligations are met, and the funding side is met, and we're dotting all of our i's and crossing our t's. And um then we've also got a little bit of this attitude of while it's there, we shouldn't pass it up. And like DJ was explaining, a lot of them are are no match, and so. We're trying to be thoughtful in how we pursue, pursue these things, but I just think that we're. From just already the grants that we've received, there's gonna be, you're gonna see a lot of money coming into Monavista over these next. Two to three years as the projects get implemented and then wrapped up. Um I'd like to have a work session with you all on. An email I sent to you about the potential of a a business opportunity out at Sky High. And um you know, work session will be open to the public, but it's very, very positive. And so wanna explain all that to you all and and see what's thinking.
You have a date planned already?
Do not have a date planned, you know, ne- next week is a little tight, following week is C M L, next week is Fourth of July. And then our next council meeting on the sixth, so um. We're still, I'm still working on a few of the details, I mean, there's a lot of details that need to be looked at, but. Just some of the things I think will be pertinent for you all to know, so that we can see how we're gonna move forward. Again, just wanna say thank you to my staff, they're all doing a very, very good job, and we're all. Really busy, and so it's, it's fun, it's like the confetti is all flying, and so we just, you know, which piece do you pick up first? Thanks.
Thank you, Gigi. They will go to council committee, city commission, and council report. Council rounds, nothing. Mayor President Segala. Nuggets made history. Go Nuggets, go Monavista, go S L P. That's all. Councilor Howard.
Uh yeah, it was interesting to listen to folks talk about. Concerning about streets. Are are districts like um, one street's like no stop signs this way, and then but another one is the other way, so it kinda set up so you can. Go down one road without a stop sign, if you're on the next road over here, you have a stop sign, I think that's the way it's kinda set up, right?
And a lot of them, there's, there's some of them that are, yeah.
But some of the signs, it seems like, you know, children in place, I thought. Relative music, it's not, it's not, it's just an information sign. Though it was interesting, obviously concerned, but. Other than that, um hope for a good song.
Definitely. Councilor Locke.
Well, I appreciate them coming tonight too, of course, I'm very proud of them, they're my family, I think that my grandchildren behaved reasonably well. For their ages, they sat there very quietly, and they were just cute as little buttons, so that being said, um. I think it's important that Chief Dingfelder has indicated in the past that there have been laws that have been changed, that have. Sort of bound their hands, um. And I think that that's, I think it's. Difficult to expect them to maintain our safety, to maintain our laws. If we don't help unburden them. Uh to that end, I I had just a chance encounter with Representative Martinez. Expressed my concerns with him. Expressed my concerns with him and he and his uh, I believe he said his chief of staff. Are gonna do some digging and 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 look into those Senate bills and those House bills. And see what can be done, if anything. Or if he even agrees that they should be, and if he doesn't, that's fine, I'll go, I'll keep going until I find someone that does. Um and I would appreciate any support in that. Uh because I do believe as a town council, we have to look out for our citizens and part of that is making sure our departments can work as. Efficiently as as they can. Um I'm thankful that Mr. Farish says that maybe doing a traffic study is not going to be needed. That also unburdens our police department. If if that if that is so, I I realize that. The two of you were saying something that was not quite in agreement, but I trust the two of you will get together and. And just follow the law.
Uh and I didn't say that it wasn't needed, but I think we don't have to follow that. Regimen that C D O were following this whole.
And however you can help them do that most efficiently, I know that things take time. Things take time beyond our control, but when we have control, let's let's try to use that. Um so that's all I've got. I'm just, and I invite um any other citizens of Montevista that have. Concerns. We don't know about it. If you don't come and tell us, you've got to come and tell us. So the I guess this is mostly not for anyone in this room. I'm hoping somebody will see this on camera and. And realize that we care about their neighborhood as well and we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will back up what you you said about the news station that was here. That was a lot of fun. Being able to brag about Montevista and that's everything San Luis Valley. And there, the new station's goal is to encourage people from the front range to come over to the San Luis Valley. To participate, be a tourist over here. And it it was a lot of fun. Cause I have a bad taste of press because of a fire. When I first seen the the email that came through, I was like, okay, whatever. But then I started reading through it and it's like, okay, this sounds like it could be really enjoyable. And the young man that was here. Um. Said that uh actually at the end of the segment that they will do a live broadcast from one of the cities in the valley. So we were really encouraging him. Montevista and uh he, I called him afterwards and I was on my way home from work. He thanked him for being here and having a great positive attitude that he had and he said. Out of all the places he was at, he said, I really felt most comfortable here in Monteville. Were just the way everything was, how the interviews went, back when we were at the skate park and there was a couple kids showed up was over there. One was rollerblading, one was on his bicycle. It was just really cool how everything went. So looking forward to that. So let's hope that they pick Monteville because that would be huge for us. Um.
Yeah, and you'll be able to watch, they'll let us know when the segment's running and you'll be able to watch it on online. Off the website.
Yeah, so notify. You, I think he said, but he had my contact that he said would notify you. So looking forward to it, so. I'll say that summertime, take care of your gardens, keep an eye out on your neighbors. Um I'm starting to realize that several of my neighbors are starting to date themselves. When I get a call from one and he says, could you take my trash can out to a curb? Cause I can't do it in. So. Make sure and you know what, there's nothing wrong with being nosy. Meet your neighbors. I met some of your neighbors. That's good. I met one the other day that just moved in behind me, so I just got nosy and said, who are you? Um look after each other. Um for that, I'm gonna go with uh one more thing. The Nuggets game shown at the Valley Three Theater the other night is absolutely amazing. It's the first time I've seen a line to to get into the theater. In forever. There were people standing out waiting. There's about a hundred and fifty, two hundred people there and it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun and I ate me a large bag of popcorn and a Coke, so. And I still suffer from that one, I'll tell you. But with that, we will adjourn the meeting till July sixth at six P M, Monty Strong.